All right, it's time to go. I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next item is the roll call. Please note that all board members are in attendance. Item 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest this evening that need to be disclosed? Seeing none, item 2.3, we need a review and approval of the agenda. Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Stein. Second by Ms. Moulton. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll approve the minutes of the July 12th, 2021 meeting. And could we have a motion for that, please?
I do need to note a correction to the minutes. Action 21223, policy IKA grading. We need to update from five votes yes to four votes yes with note that Jean Moulton voted no.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes with the correction made?
I move approval of the minutes as corrected.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And move on to 2.5. We will receive the financial reports for July. Ms. Clausen?
Thank you. In the general fund, revenue received included the first monthly state aid payment in the estimated amount of $1,113,900. This amount will be adjusted once the district's 2122 enrollment is verified. The revenue was exceeded by the expenditures, which is typical for July. This fund's ending cash position reflects an increase when compared to the prior two years and is a direct reflection of the increased allocation in federal support received under the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. Capital outlay revenue consisted of the typical July property taxes along with interest income. Expenditures included the scheduled payment for construction in progress of the high school remodel as well as a debt service payment. This fund's ending cash position is relatively consistent with that of the prior year when the remaining certificate allocation for the remodel for the high school is retained from the balance. Special education also received the first monthly state aid payment in the estimated amount of $161,426. This amount will also fluctuate slightly until the final enrollment numbers are confirmed. The revenue received in the Fund of Lake Area Tech consisted of several different sources, including a state aid payment in the amount of $1,808,858. Expenditures exceeded revenue for the month with the cash position of this fund increasing. Sales and expenditures were typical for this time of year for Lake Area Technical College bookstore and food service with increased activity anticipated in the upcoming months. Lake Area Technical College Educare continues to trend by exceeding expenditures during the month. Revenue of $27,600 was received from the Department of Social Services as supported under the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act for the purpose of providing childcare program stabilization funding. A portion of the funding will go directly to families in support of their childcare costs. The ending cash position of this fund continues to increase. Within the operation of the K-12 enterprise funds, limited activity was noted with increased activity anticipated in the upcoming months with the startup of school. I would be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Clausen? If not, item 2.6 is the student staff recognition.
Yes, we do not have any this month. So we're looking forward to getting back here with some fall activities and get that rolling.
All right, thank you. And next we'll move on to the discussion items for Lake Area. And first of all, item 3.1, is there any public input on agenda or non-agenda items this evening related to Lake Area? Seeing nobody, next we'll have President Cartney update us on the fall startup.
Thank you, ma'am. Just some real quick overview for you. The big things going on, Lake Area Tech, of course, our fall enrollment, which is looking very strong. We're doing some strategic expansion in programs, particularly with the new healthcare facility wing that we have. But also, we continue to have physical space constraints for some programs. But we do have, but we still have an increase in college-age students that are enrolled as well as an increase in our dual credits up significantly. I'll talk more about our fall return to normal, which is our COVID mitigation plan in a moment. And we also, the other big thing going on, of course, is our I'm in capital campaign. We have two buildings of that complete. We have the Archway Complex, which includes an advanced manufacturing lab. And the diesel wing expansion, both those are in our design and engineering phases. And those will add 250 more students to Lake Area Tech's capacity. And then we'll have three more projects following the completion of those projects. The other things that are going on, we've started some new apprenticeship programs that'll start this fall. Two of them are in telecommunications. There is another apprenticeship program that's in support of the Jack Links in here in South Dakota. In addition, we have our consolidated apprenticeship app is developed and underway. We've been designated by the FAA as a trust site. That means that we are one of 16 sites nationally to be able to award people their drone licenses. And that's for people who are going to fly recreational as well as small drones. We've entered a partnership with Toyota for our auto program. We received our Higher Learning Commission review. We received an all pass and our Upskills program is underway as well as the consolidation of our, what we call our wraparound services center. We're offering more camps this coming fall. We're excited about this, particularly the two new drone camps. There'll be a drone camp for ninth through 12th graders and then a youth drone and code camp for three through eighth graders. So we're excited to see those coming forward and those will be on the dates coming out in our publication shortly. Our return to normal plan, which is our COVID mitigation plan, as we enter the third year affected by COVID, this will be ours. We plan to continue with our risk mitigation approach. And so we return to normal operations with some exceptions that include particular emphasis on education, reporting, contact tracing, isolation and quarantine if exposed remain in place. And then in a matter, this is all, our focus is to limit COVID-19 spread and impact as well as protecting our at-risk population. And of course, we're always emphasizing that technical education is the pipeline for a lot of the essential services across the state. And therefore, technical education is an essential service. You can see this is the last year, how we did with COVID. The light blue line at the bottom, or the blue line at the bottom is the number of COVID cases we had. You can see that our spike was only 20 cases the entire year last year. And lately has been doing very well. It's been at zero since about just after graduation. Maximum for our COVID mitigation plan, probably the biggest emphasis we're going to have is educating people on and the new students coming in on COVID and how to mitigate it, which includes the standard, you know, social distancing. Don't come to work if you're sick. Same would be true for classes. If you have symptoms, don't come to class. Personal hygiene, sanitation, barriers, including plexiglass and maxes as warranted, and then vaccination. We'll provide education to our students in all these areas so they can make good decisions on their behavior. And then, of course, we'll continue with testing and reporting. We'll do isolating and quarantining, but note that the CDC has given the guidance that somebody who is vaccinated that's been exposed does not need to quarantine. And we will honor or continue to adhere to the CDC guidelines. And then we'll make sure that our staff is still continuing to have two weeks of online education out there ready for those students who do contract COVID and become infected so that they can support the students. And the students can continue their education without losing valuable time. And of course, vaccination for us, vaccinations are highly encouraged, but they're not required. And we'll continue our monitoring. And should there be an outbreak, we would revert to last year's plan, which is a little bit more stringent on the enforcement of things. Just some other things I wanted to take a moment and just brag about, Lake Area Tech, the faculty and staff there, they're doing an outstanding job. As you can see, this year, Lake Area Tech basically swept the American Technical Education Association's awards. We had the Outstanding Teacher of the Year. We had the National Outstanding Student of the Year. We had the International Outstanding Trustee of the Year. And our partnership with Prairie Lakes Honor System was the only partnership recognized by the ATEA. We also had a Teacher of the Month in Brady Brockle. Jesse Wento, who is one of our counselors, was accepted into a program called the South Dakota Change Leadership Training. And Diane Stiles, our Vice President, has been picked up for a very exclusive Aspen Rising Presidents Fellowship. That'll be a year long, but she will be here for most of that. But that's an outstanding program that's preparing people to meet the critical shortage of presidents and leadership in community colleges across the nation. And you can see that Lake Area Tech continues to be ranked the top of the nation. As we're ranked as the top trade school in the nation, but also in the top four globally by MSN. But also in the top three, in the top one for best colleges, two-year colleges online. We are featured in a recent article with, by some national writers who write for The Atlantic as well as for HBO. The Lumina National Magazine put out an article about our advising that featured a couple of our instructors as well as students. And it was really an outstanding article. As well as our welding program received the Excellence in Equity in Community College STEM Award, which we're very proud of. And that came with $50,000. $25,000 of that went directly to students' scholarships. And of course, the Mackenzie Scott Award this year for $10 million. On my near blog, you can see why she noted, why she happened to pick Lake Area Tech. This is not something we asked for or applied for, but rather they did a search and awarded to a number of entities. In fact, 384 across the nation. Lake Area Tech was honored to be one of those. So those are the big things that are going on at Lake Area Tech. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Congratulations. Looks excellent. I'd appreciate a copy of that PowerPoint, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the action items for Lake Area Tech. And first of all, personnel, 4.1.1 resignations.
Yes, ma'am. We have one resignation. We do recommend your acceptance of that resignation as presented.
All right, could we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation as presented.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4.1.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Yes, ma'am. The contract recommendations are fairly typical for this time of year. We do want to congratulate Brittany Brennan on earning her PhD. But we'd recommend that your acceptance of the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
All right, could we have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
Motion by Mrs. Lor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, in that section, we have the stipend requests.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech and the Watertown School District strongly support our faculty continuing their education and to seek further degrees. In that vein, we request your support for the requests from Alexis Stenton and Caleb Campbell for their continuing education stipends.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve the stipend requests?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll move on to the property items for Lake Area. And first of all, we've got 4.2.1, consider the North Parking Lot Project bids.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech recommends accepting the low bid for the North Parking Lot, which was for an asphalt surfacing from J&amp;J Earthworks. The total amount for that parking lot project will be $270,862.60. And this bid meets all specifications and is under the, what we had budgeted, which is $300,000. We request your approval of that bid.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Iverson. Can we have a second? Second by Ms. Moulton to approve the parking lot bid from J&amp;J Earthworks. Is there any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we've got 4.2.2, consider the Boys and Girls Club lease agreement.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Tech partners with the Boys and Girls Club to lease their gymnasium after hours. Lake Area Tech students then have exclusive access to the gym for their intermarital sports. And we anticipate that the total of this lease would be about $2,500. We request your approval of that lease agreement.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club as presented.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4.3, consider the Educare payroll supplement.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Area Technical College, our Children's Educare Center received funding through the South Dakota Partnership of Social Services as supported under the coronavirus, Corona Response and Relief Support Supplemental Appropriations Act for the purpose of providing childcare program stabilization funding. And through this funding program, we were able to provide a stipend to each one of our care providers that provided care during the COVID, during the pandemic, to a total of $12,200. And also, as mentioned by Ms. Clausen, the support for some of the families that weren't able to meet all of their hour requirements during the pandemic. We request your approval of that payroll package.
All right, could we have a motion to approve the Educare payroll supplement package?
I'll motion to approve it.
Motion by Ms. Lor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein. Any comments or questions on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to personal privilege. I was remiss when I gave my presentation to mention that, you know, the accolades that Lake Area Tech has received this year doesn't happen without great leadership, both for the superintendent and this board, as well as this community. You know, I often say that Watertown, or Lake Area Tech wouldn't be Lake Area Tech if it wasn't here in Watertown. And that's true, but Watertown also shares in those accolades that Lake Area Tech has received.
All right, thank you, President Cartney. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion items for 14-4. And first off, 5.1, is there any public opinion on agenda or non-agenda items this evening for K-12 issues? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to 5.2 and the Northeast Tech High School report.
Thank you. Superintendents will fire it up again tomorrow, August 10th, 10:00 a.m. Our superintendents will kind of set the school year at Northeast Tech. And then the full board will meet next Wednesday, August 18th, at 5:45 for the same purpose.
Okay, thank you. 5.3, we'll hear about our return to school plans and also our American Rescue Plan.
Thank you. I'll start, and then Heidi will have a portion on the rescue plan here for information purposes. First of all, let me start by thanking our community, our staff, students and our administrators for their work last year. We made it through and very grateful for the group that got together here in July to help us put together our return to school plan for 2021, '22 school year. So what we have essentially done is we've added an addendum to last year's plan. What that will allow us to do is keep in play all the measures we took last year while we institute kind of a separate return plan. And we want to make that visible as we publish this. So some of the big items that I know are of interest for our startup this year. First of all, and I'll kind of roll down the bullets on the plan there that you can see up on the screen. Cloth face coverings or face masks are optional for all employees and students of the district. That was the language that we utilized for the summer. The, we had used the term expected for most of the school year. And we changed that to optional. We had minimal COVID cases over the summer when we had summer school and all of our summer activities. And that is our recommendation for the upcoming school year. With that particular item, with close contacts. What we would start the year is, so the state measures are still in place. From a notification standpoint, they would still notify myself if there is a positive student or staff case. We would then ask at the building level that the contact tracing work be done. We would report those close contacts back to the state. But our recommendation to start the year is that there be no close contact quarantining. The only quarantining would be done by our COVID-positive individuals for 10 days. Arrange the classroom seating to provide spacing as feasible with seating charts to be maintained. Our classroom teachers do have seating charts in a normal year. We just want to make sure we're diligent about following those. Those will be a big landmark as far as providing the contact tracing work is going back and taking a look at those seating charts. We are recommending starting the year with cohort groups moving more freely around the building. Also, again, noting the seating charts when they go to these other classes. Common areas will be open before and after school. We want to remind parents that congregating may occur. And we just will still continue to ask students to provide spacing as feasible. Visitors will be allowed with screening through the office. When I say screening, that will mean a couple of questions. One of them being if they've experienced any symptoms themselves that day or if they've come in contact with someone in the last 10 days. We are still asking staff and families to self-screen for symptoms prior to either sending your child to school or for the staff member coming to work. Lunch and breakfast seating to be maintained by classroom where feasible. Again, to try and limit some of the contact with others. One note from our lunchroom status, we are recommending that the plexiglass that was up in the lunchroom, on the lunchroom tables the past year, that would be taken down to start the year. We are not getting rid of it, but start the year without the plexiglass barriers in place at lunch. Another item with regard to lunch, allow for self-service food or beverage distribution in the cafeteria and self-entry of lunch numbers with sanitizing stations established. Last year, we did away with the self-serve stations. We are recommending starting with those back in. Those could be scaled back if we need to. A reminder to those families, this is similar to last year with regards to school transportation, that we do not have the space to socially distance on the buses. So we just remind people if they're uncomfortable with the school transportation that they would be encouraged to transport their own children. Classrooms last year were cleaned multiple times throughout the day for the high-touch surfaces and desktops. We are still maintaining one time a day for those. Most likely be encouraged to be the end of the day so that when you come to start in the morning, it's clean. Still increased sanitation efforts for our electronic devices, books, toys, other games or learning aids. Try and keep students as individualized as possible with cubbies, containers, desks or lockers. And then keep educating folks on the COVID protocols. From an online perspective, our recommendation to begin the year is that there be two possibilities for an online school. One would be if the student themselves have a medical, documented medical condition that would preclude them from coming to school. And the second would be is if someone in the household has a medical condition that would make it not very wise to have the child at school. In both of those cases, we are saying that part of that, granting that is that the families and student refrain from outside activities. So those students would not be eligible for our activities, athletic, music, clubs, those sort of things. And we would ask that they then refrain from other outside activities, meaning if they are well enough to go to those, participate in those group activities, they would be well enough to come to school or able to come to school. So I think I hit the high notes. I would stand by for questions on that part before Heidi switches over to the financial part.
All right, now the exciting part. Under our latest round of funding under S.R. 3, it requires an American Rescue Plan in determination of funding opportunities. The American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund was established in response to the immense challenges facing students, educators, staff, schools and districts in preparing for and responding to COVID-19. The funds are for a wider array of activities to address diverse needs arising from the pandemic or to emerge stronger post-pandemic. This includes responding to students' social, emotional, mental health and academic needs. Because of the unprecedented one-time funding available to the districts, the South Dakota Department of Ed encourages school districts to invest the funding strategically. Investment should provide sustained benefits to students and positively impact the district long-term. With that said, the Watertown School District has identified funding opportunities as outlined to include summer school and early learning initiatives and accommodation to online learning instruction as well as funding to support ongoing and continuation of literacy coaches, interventionists, instructional coaches, academic recovery and social, emotional curriculum as well as technology. The funding requires that 20% of the funding be set aside or $935,826,000 be set aside to accommodate learning loss. The Watertown School District intends to invest 60% in academic impact loss instructional time with the other 40% identified under investments and other allowed activities specific to technology supports. The Watertown School District has prioritized learning initiatives and it was evident through the pandemic the additional supports that the district has in place that assisted through a semester of complete online learning as well as navigating a full year of online and in-person learning initiatives. The additional supports that our district has in place, including literacy coaches, interventionists, instructional coaches and academic recovery assistance, has been and will continue to be a clear identifier in the initiatives our district will take to accommodate the learning loss and impacts seen through the pandemic. Through our budget work session and adoption of the 2022 fiscal year budget, it was noted that our enrollment is anticipated to decline by 150 students within the upcoming three to five fiscal years. This decrease is noted at $900,000 per year in generated revenue based on the funding formula of our general fund in which is made up of 85% accommodation of salary and benefits of our district employees. The funding formula, which is a generation of enrollment multiplied essentially by a per-student equivalent, makes up 80% of our general fund revenue. Therefore, our enrollment drives revenue and our revenue drives the accommodation of our employee salaries and benefits. Through the S.R. allocation of round three and the federal fund spanning over three fiscal years, the decline in enrollment will be accommodated by federal offset supports in order to continue the programming and increase academic needs of our students. Without the support of federal initiatives, as identified under the CARES allocations, our district would be evaluating program cuts to accommodate a $900,000 loss to revenue. As a reminder, our S.R. 3 funding, which includes the requirement of the American Rescue Plan, spans over a three-year funding period through September of 2024 and therefore accommodating three fiscal years. Should the plan as presented require an amendment, information related to the changes would be noted and approved through future school board meetings. The full plan will be made available on our district website and upon request. I would be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
So there will be votes taken on this, are there two votes or one?
So there will be votes taken on this, are there two votes or one?
Correct. Under action items, there will be one vote on the plan that I presented, and then a second vote on the financial piece. So there's two agenda items. They are 6.5 for the return to school plans and 6.6 is where the action will take place, should there be any on the agenda.
I have some comments and concerns, but I'll add those later when we actually take this up as a business item.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? I would like to thank the community and staff committee that got together to put together the return to school plan. We're still, even though we're three years into this, I feel like we're still charting on uncharted waters, I should say. So, all right, we'll move on to 5.4 then, and the reading, first reading of policies. First is policy DJA, the purchasing policy.
Thank you. DJA purchasing policy is just a change in the bid limit for bid laws, state bid laws. And so we are reflecting state changes there from 50,000 to 100,000. And this is just a first reading, so if there are comments on that, we would bring it back to the September board meeting for a second reading and it'll be posted for public comment.
Okay, could we have a motion to, oh, we don't do.
No motion.
Okay, right. And then we'll go to J H C D E.
Thank you. 5.4.2 and 5.4.3 deal with the addition of medical cannabis, which was passed by vote of the people here in last November. And we have been receiving guidance from our state organization, associated school boards. And so the policy presented today reflects the guidance we have received in conjunction with both that state organization, the Legislative Rules Committee. And this is what we're presenting to you today. The way that would essentially look is if someone has a card, they would, we would not administer or store the medical cannabis in the school. But what would be filled out then is the J H C D E dash E, the exhibit, which is the form that a family would fill out. They would designate two caregivers who could bring the medical cannabis to the school. We would provide a private room for them to administer it. They would give the medical marijuana in non-smokable form to the student. And then they would exit bringing any left out with them. So it would be, it's a pretty buttoned-up approach to this, is how that would look. Our understanding is that there would not be any cards issued until November. So we do have a couple of months to continue to prep for this. But that's the gist of the policy. J H C D E is the policy. J H C D E dash E1 is the, are the forms related to that. And again, first reading, so we would bring back for the second reading in September.
Any comments or questions on those two policies? And they are just referring to students.
Correct. This refers to students only at this point. We are still awaiting guidance for staff use of this. And those will probably be separate policies coming at a later time.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to the action items. 6.1 approval of the bills. Could we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of approving bills, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Move to 6.2 on the personnel. First, we'll do the resignations.
I'll make a motion for resignations.
Motion to approve the resignations by Mrs. Lor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein. Do we have any comments on the resignations? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We've got 6.2.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Yes, we're bringing forth contract recommendations and addendums. This is summer trainings, summer PD, again, our summer school. And then we're hiring people for the, the school year. We're contracting people for the school year. So this, these are for you to approve.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to do contracts.
Motion by Mrs. Lor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein to approve the contract recommendations and addendums. Any comments or questions?
Real quick question, Mr. Stacy, the folks that we're approving here, will they be at the New Teacher Academy?
New Teacher Academy, let's see here, yes, there will be, there will be a few of these that will be at the New Teacher Academy. But there will be the others that we did approve earlier this summer or this spring that will be there as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 6.2.3, the stipend requests.
Yes, we have four staff members requesting stipends for the fall semester.
Could we have a motion to approve those stipend requests?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on the stipend requests? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And 6.2.4, the authority to hire.
Yes, we have increased special ed needs of students. And so we are bringing forth three per professionals through an authority to hire.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve that authority to hire?
I motion the authority to hire.
Motion by Mrs. Lor. Second by Mr. Stein. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And then we'll move to our property items. And 6.3.1, we'll consider a property purchase agreement.
Yes, this is a property purchase. It's 1014 Second Avenue Southeast at a cost of 142,500. This piece of property has been the subject of discussion for the past year and in the most recent months. The district's ownership of this property is desired due to the fact that it is one of the two properties on the north side of Garfield. Ownership of this entire block provides for flexibility of any future building projects related to an elementary building accommodation, as well as the possibility of selling Garfield were to arise. Selling of the block as a whole would provide for a better selling standpoint. As a reminder, these funds have been budgeted in FY '22 to accommodate this purchase. The district would intend to rent out this property until the needs would arise for future building. We would recommend your approval of this purchase agreement.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve that purchase agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Iverson. Can we have a second, please? Saying goodbye, Ms. Moulton. Any comments or questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. And now we have item 6.4, look at approving the 2021-22 consolidated application.
Thank you. This is our annual request for title funding. The consolidated application is our process that we use to request this funding that is allocated through the federal dollars. A full copy of this plan would be available in the office should anyone wish to see that.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the consolidated application?
I move approval of the consolidated application of title funding.
Motion by Ms. Moulton. Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 6.5, we need to approve our return to school plan as Dr. Danielson presented earlier.
Yes, please note, this would be the return to school, the draft that I worked off of with the bullet points, the return to school plan 2021. But it also includes last year's plan as a part. When we, when we refer to this year's plan, we're referring to all three pages. So that the knowledge is that if we have to revert to anything from last year's plan, that's still in place.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the return to school plans as presented.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Iverson. Are there any questions now?
I should add that we had an excellent discussion. I was in on the committee and you were there as well. It was very open, excellent.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve that return to school plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now 6.6, we need to approve the American Rescue Plan as it was presented. Could we have a motion first?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Are there any comments or questions on the proposed American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Couple of concerns. This plan for this portion has $2,137,000 set aside for salaries for 10 staff. These are not classroom staff. I think that there's a missed opportunity also here to address through all of these plans, some other concerns, particularly a crisis at middle school, high school, and that is a shortage of teachers. High school alone is short two English, two social studies, one Spanish, one half German, at least one to two science and one to two math. And if you look at the remodel, some of these classrooms are quite small, so it's extremely crowded. Last year identified at least 153 sections that were oversized just at the high school. A number of these are freshmen. I'll talk about where the freshmen will be here in a minute. And I went through the entire schedule, both middle school and high school, for all the teachers to come up with that. And this shortage occurred before the big bubble. There's a large bubble of population moving through the high school right now. The shortage of teachers occurred before that, and it will continue after the bubble. It's still continuing. If you look at schematic here, this is the remodel. These classrooms are about 760 and some are even smaller square footage. If you walk across the street to Lake Area, you'll notice the classrooms over there are much larger. If we were building a larger school, a new school, these classrooms would not be this small. As the architects explained, they would be much larger. So what we're doing is pushing students in like sardines into small classrooms, a 30, 29. They're large. And these are the ones identified that were oversized 25. So small classrooms, shortage of teachers, it's a concern. I think that we should maybe look at some of these federal dollars to might alleviate that. We could either hire more teachers or we could reposition some staff who are not in non-teaching, non-classroom situations to cover. The main problem with the high school is that the Arrow Academy pulls seven to eight core teachers, math, science, language, science, social studies. And that caused the shortage for everyone else. That meant over 1,000 students were pushed into large classes because there wasn't the staff to cover them. Freshman house, if you look at that schematic, the freshmen will be moved to one area of the building. But if you look at class sizes, they're still in large classes. So I still think this is a concern. I noticed that on the federal funding listed, we have 50,000 set aside for socially emotional learning. I would say being shoved into a large classroom overcrowded is certainly a socially and emotional problem. So I think that we should do some more legwork planning since some of this can be amended, or at least look at solving some of this some other way.
And I will speak to some of your concerns, Jean, as well. One area to note is that this is a three-year federal funding opportunity. So with that said, we do have to be careful with how we're spending dollars because the funding does go away. And with that said, if we are looking to increase significantly, I mean, I know you noted several positions that were short. If we were to increase those positions just for three years, in year three, we're going to be looking at how do we fund that going forward. Another thing to note, under the American Rescue Plan, we are clearly identifying areas that we feel accommodate learning loss. So the positions that are noted, literacy coaches, interventionists, ARC, instructional coaches, we felt those positions are directly identifiable to learning loss. But again, that's, what it's doing is it's freeing up some of those local funds that we typically accommodate these positions with. It accommodates those for three years. After that, we have flexibility of how will, how will we maintain? Hopefully enrollment doesn't decline the way it should. So this plan doesn't quite touch on a lot of the concerns that you have, but I do understand that it does open the opportunity to you to speak to those concerns. So thank you.
Yep, that's exactly my point, that it should be spoken to and it should be addressed.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you.
And now when you're talking student or teacher shortages, we're not talking about jobs that we have open, sitting, waiting for somebody to apply for their just positions that you feel are low in the high school.
Yes, when you look at the actual numbers, social studies, history classes, class after class. For instance, U.S. history, 29, 29, 30, 30, 30. Freshmen Spanish, extremely tight. World geography, freshman course, extremely crowded. The English sections are huge. And each of those English sections, and that includes the social studies, are all being shoved into much smaller classrooms, some of smaller than what they had before.
Have any other comments or questions here? I think, thank you, Jean, for your comments that we need to look into a little more. We do have a motion and a second to approve the American Rescue Plan as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we had four votes, yes, and Ms. Moulton with the abstention. 6.7, consider the 2021 fall athletic fundraising.
Thank you. This is our annual request to sell arrow cards. And the reason for bringing this particular fundraising request to the board is policy JJE, which asks that all door-to-door fundraising activities have prior approval by the school board. And so we are asking for that permission once again to go out and sell arrow cards this fall.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the fundraising?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stein. Any comments or questions on the fundraising? I'd just like to thank the community for getting out there and buying these cards. This really does help out a lot with, with the programs. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And 6.8, we have a South Dakota High School Activities Association runoff ballot.
Yes, your eyes aren't playing tricks on you. This will be the third time this spring and summer that we have voted on the West River at-large representative for the South Dakota High School Activities Association. The first time was the initial election. That ballot was deemed ineffective because there was a person who retired before the ballots were counted. So in July, you had the initial ballot and no one received 50% of that vote. So in July, you had the initial ballot, and no one received 50% of that vote, so here we are in a runoff. We are again recommending Todd Palmer from Sturgis Brown for your consideration.
Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Iverson. Can we have a second? Second by Ms. Moulton to approve our vote for Todd Palmer from Sturgis Brown for this ballot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now we have our student enrollment requests. First of all, 6.9.1, open enrollment requests.
Yes, we have three open enrollment requests that we are recommending for your approval.
Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. Any comments or questions on open enrollment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And 6.9.2, the 1328-10.
Yes, I have.
I did set at your station an updated student assignment request from the, the packet from today, that we only have one student assignment request that we are recommending for your approval. The second one requires a little more work.
Could we have a motion, please?
I move acceptance of the student assignment request as presented.
Motion by Ms. Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Lor. And any comments or questions on these? You know, since it's the beginning of the year, would you explain the difference between the two of these? Because a lot of times, the public doesn't have any idea what we're talking about.
Open enrollment pertains only to a South Dakota resident student. So a Castlewood student wants to come to Watertown, they can fill out an open enrollment request for your consideration. A 1328-10 typically is for an out-of-state student, and the 1328-10 process is the student would live with somebody who is a resident, and it essentially is the Watertown School District resident who is applying to you as the board to have this student treated as a resident student. And that process needs to be fulfilled because, you know, the, again, the Watertown taxpayers are responsible for educating those students who are Watertown residents, and so the appeal then is to our citizen board to treat this student as a resident for the purposes of 1328-10, or say, when a student from another school district asks to come in, we are then saying that the Watertown taxpayers will pay for that student to be treated here. Our funding is then reflected through the state, because then we get to count them in our student count, and then we get compensated for them as such.
Okay, thank you. We have the motion and the second to approve the 1328-10s. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And now we'll move on to communications, and first of all, the administrative reports.
Thanks. I want to put a plug in for the chamber for sponsoring our new teacher luncheon once again. That will be at noon on Thursday, August 19th, at the Country Road Barn. So if you are interested in coming, school board members too, if you are interested in attending, you need to let me know that, so we can take care of you. But the general public, you should see Tim Sheehan through the chamber. They graciously do this and host this for us every year, and so we're excited to have the community welcome our new staff.
I misspoke when I asked Mr. Stacy about New Teacher Academy. I meant the New Teacher Luncheon. The folks that we're approving here will be at the New Teacher Luncheon?
I took it the way you said.
Okay, okay, good.
Can't get one by Mr. Stacy tonight. Also, another plug, we, as part of our calendar, this was a COVID addition to our calendar that's something we tried last year, is our pre-parent-teacher conference nights, as opposed to our old open-house format. Those are on August 23rd and 24th. Communication for those nights will take place through the buildings. And then finally, just a reminder, this was announced during last school year, but as part of the COVID relief plan, there will once again be free lunches for all students K-12 this year. So for parents, if they're preparing for back-to-school expenses, stocking your child's lunch account won't need to be one of them. There are free lunches again this school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Danielson. Item 7.2, is there any thing for the board to report to the superintendent?
I might also add, the first day of school is Thursday, August 26th, so that might be important to note as well.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stein.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Lor. All in favor, say aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.